I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and good morning. Welcome to Mahoney County Commissioners' meeting, board meeting. It is number thirty-nine, and it is approximately ten oh six A.M. And the meeting is officially called to order. And if there's anyone here that would like to publicly comment, you have three minutes, and your name and address for the record. There he is.
The man of the hour.
Ralph will save the best for last. We'll do it at the end. No public comments. Perry, welcome from our auditor's office of the state. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I live in Mahoney County. Eight, uh, seven two 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 Pennsylvania Avenue, Old Ohio.
Close to me.
There you go.
Welcome.
I could never live on a road that was named Pennsylvania.
He said Transylvania.
I would, I would, I could live on Transylvania.
People were kissing me last night. All right. Well, with that being said, I need a motion to approve previous minutes of board meeting number thirty-eight. Bills for payment.
So moved.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. All right. Number one, advertising for bids. O M B Grants.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Mahoney Anna.
This is an advertisement for bids for the city's City of Struthers. Improvement on the Poland Avenue sidewalk and tree removal project. This is part of our community development plan.
Thank you. Okay. Motion.
Motion to approve advertisements for bids, number one.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. Legal notice, number one. Sanitary, Mr. Genetti.
Good morning, everybody. This is a notice for statement qualifications for engineering services related to wastewater treatment plants, construction and maintenance of sanitary lines, pump stations, equipment, and designed to structural additions and repairs of buildings.
Okay. And congratulations, Pat.
Thank you. That's the first time I've ever won.
Telling you.
Good job. Your chili was very good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Who made your chili, Pat?
I make my chili.
Yeah, yeah. The committee may have had something to do with that.
Yep.
All right. Motion.
Motion legal notices, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. Journal entry, number one.
Motion approved journal entry, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Three pages today. Nancy. Okay. Agreements. We have letters A through J, and we'll begin with the auditors.
This, I believe, is the postal mills. As you may know, the county auditor's office handles processes, mails out many, many DOB licenses every year. This is to renew the contract for the postal mills for to handle that. Of course, they do reduce those.
Okay, thank you. And congratulations to you and your chili.
Thanks.
Engineers, B, C, and D. Pat?
Commissioners, letter B is an agreement with Commercial Truck and Trailer. This is for repairs to vehicle forty-eight in the estimated amount of one thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars, twenty-nine cents. Letter C is an agreement with Hill International for repairs to vehicle fifty-five in the amount of six thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. And letter D is an agreement with McLean Company for repairs to vehicle five thirty-five in the estimated amount of five thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, ninety-four cents. These are all non-general funds.
Very good. Thank you, Pat. Facilities, Mr. Fortunato.
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with A I M Construction, Inc. It's for the replacement of roof at the soil-water building on Industrial Road. This is the lowest and bestest three quotations that were obtained.
Thank you, Jimmy. And letters F and G, Audrey Morales. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an agreement, Job and Family Service Amendment, number one, with A B M Parking Services for additional parking passes in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight dollars, non-general. Letter G, Job and Family Service Subgrant Agreement with Compass Family and Community Services for guardianship and adult protective services in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. This is from the non-general fund.
Thanks, Audrey. Lead, Mr. Perrier.
Good morning. Uh, this is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lead hazard control and/or healthy homes work to be done at three, thirty-two fifty-four Oak Street in the amount of sixteen thousand, three twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you. O M B Grants?
Commissioners, this is, these are agreements with the following advertising services in the estimated amount for the Boardman News, thirty-six hundred dollars, Bud Guy Review, six thousand four hundred fourteen dollars, and Hometown News, two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. These are ARPA and ERA funds that'll be used either to notify the public of any changes or information you want to share under those programs and also provide advertisement for the programs that you've selected to encourage people to participate in those programs.
Thank you. And sanitary, Pat?
Commissioners, letter J is an agreement with Chevrolet to repairs to department vehicle E M A four one five eight in the estimated amount of one thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars, forty-six cents. These are non-general funds.
Hey, very good. Thank you. Agreements, letters A through J?
Motion to approve number two, agreements, A through J.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. Change orders, A and B. Pat?
Commissioners, uh, letter A is change order number two with Lindy paving for the South Avenue widening project in the amount of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred seven dollars, ninety-seven cents. Uh, this is non-general and eighty percent ODOT funds.
Good. Thank you. Lead, Phil Perrier?
We have a change order, uh, with American Pinnacle Construction for additional lead hazard control, uh, healthy homes work at thirteen eleven Rigby in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. Motion.
Motion to approve number three, change orders, A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. Road closing, A and B. Pat Genetti.
Commissioners, letter A is to amend journal entry twenty-one dash oh nine dash oh one seven and to annoy Commissioner Dixler a little longer by extending the closure of Turner Road through October sixteenth. Uh, this is for bridge demolition work on the overhead turnpike bridges and then closing Kirk Road immediately following the opening of Turner through October twenty-ninth. And letter B, we're going to close Tippy Canoe Road between Lefingwall and Western Reserve Road on October twelfth through the twenty-second for culvert repairs.
It's, uh, the Boardman Trustees approve that one. Larry, is that okay? I'll vote no on it.
We'll, we'll cause the Canfield side.
Motion?
Motion to approve number four, road closings, A and B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Grudgingly, yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. Resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions, number one, additions.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. Okay. Uh, resolutions, A through L, and Audrey, letter A, B. What's your?
We'll start with, um, A, Commissioners, this is a resolution to approve agreements and expenditures with the following to assist the field at Nineteen Public Health and funded by the A R A P in the following amounts, uh, from Mahoney Valley Partners, two million dollars, from Meridian Healthcare, uh, four hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And before I turn to the agencies, I'll turn it to Anna because she's done a lot of work with us, and so she would like to introduce the agencies.
Thank you. We have Mahoney Valley Partners here today, Teresa Miller. Would you like to say a few words about the program?
Sure. Um, this is a loan program, so we're taking the two million dollars, we're creating a revolving loan fund program. And the interesting part about that is that we lend it out, and as they pay it back, we can re-lend it out. So the program will be, um, it will revolve in perpetuity, so it will still be here forty years from now, um, helping those that, uh, that need it, so they may or may not have benefited by COVID. So we're excited to work with the Commissioners and with this loan program in place.
It's up to seventy-five thousand dollars per loan?
Yes.
Per loan, seventy-five thousand, correct?
Yes. Going to short term.
That's good.
How many jobs potentially?
We, um, we were hoping to create one job per twenty-five thousand dollars.
I think the initial two million at that ratio would create eighty jobs. And then in perpetuity, it could be.
Multiplier effect.
Yeah. So creation of potentially eighty jobs assisting businesses. Keep their doors open or expand or whatever they need.
And now you have, um, you have a form that people could get online, or do they have to?
Yes, they can apply online on our website, just like our other loan programs.
And, and the media would then put that on their news so that our businesses could see that?
Also send something you'd put on your website as well.
I think maybe what we'll do is just put the link to your website so they could see your full website in addition to the program.
Good deal.
And next we have Meridian Healthcare.
Thank you so much. First of all, I have to say, I think Ralph and I are the only ones here who did not win an award.
I did, I did.
So we're going.
Dave didn't get nothing. What's the common? You guys got to enter the pizza contest. That's it.
You know what, Terry, I mean, Larry, they ate all our chili, but we didn't.
Oh, yeah, exactly. They took back the second. Everyone said they needed to wash Anthony's out of their mouths so they.
Anthony, do you want to, you need a second vote on no? He spoke too soon.
I didn't realize he didn't vote yet. Um, I just want to thank you on behalf of, of Meridian. And I want to thank Wayne Petrelli and the Health Board for what they do for us. I think, um, one of the things I'm really proud of, this is going to help us to continue to provide safe place for people to get help for their addiction or their mental health. And, you know, we represent and we're proud to represent our community's most vulnerable people, people with addictions, people with mental illness, um, many of them victims of trauma, and, um, they don't have a voice. And so for us, we have to be a voice for them so that their needs are met. And I just want to thank you because today you're a voice for them too, so thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Can I ask a question? Well, Duane can answer this, I think, as well. Now that they closed, uh, the California Palms rehab, they're, they claim they had seventy-five people in there. Will, will they, will they put them in?
Oh, Commissioner, they haven't, they have a right to appeal, but our, uh, our agencies, all of our agencies, Meridian and New Kennedy and all the other local nonprofits, they're, they're available if people want to transfer, but at this point, they're still operating because they haven't gone to appeal.
May I add one thing?
The state?
I think the things that we recognize is our, our system of agencies of Mahoney County that are part of the local mental health system, we collaborate and cooperate so much. We refer clients back and forth all the time. And so anytime that we hear of anybody who's in need of our community, we'll make sure we get them somewhere to go and somewhere safe. And, um, again, we don't compete against each other. We support each other.
But Larry, you have, uh, Veterans Outreach at your, one of your facilities. Is that correct?
We do have Veterans Housing, and we did get some referrals, um, in closing.
Okay, good.
And Larry, don't you have a newly remodeled facility or new facilities that you guys built?
A few years ago, we have on Madison Avenue, it's a project that we are in partnership with, um, Help Network and also Compass. And that is housing, permanent housing for people with mental illness or addiction.
That's it.
Uh, we're full, have been since the day we opened, um, and so there's always a need. And every time we have an opportunity, we do want to say that, you know, our communities, uh, folks who are struggling with mental illness, and I know Anthony, it's something that, that's important to you, um, that's your background.
Right.
They're woefully underserved. Too many of them unfortunately are in jail or they're homeless. And, you know, honestly, since Woodside closed, uh, there's a huge gap, uh, and a need to provide support for those folks. And hopefully we'll continue to do that.
Northside Hospital. I've been saying that for how many years now? We need somewhere for our most underserved. That would be the ideal location. You can have everything there. I mean, I've been saying that forever. Government should have never stepped in and tried to run mental health. It, it just doesn't work that way.
I'd love for us to continue dialogue about how we could better serve that population.
Yeah.
And the Mental Health Board does a great job with the limited resources they have, but I think we could owe you more.
And, and thank you. We, uh, we added a new position in our board. We're going to have somebody, part of his responsibility will be housing. We're working closer than and calling in our agencies because we want to, as much as possible, put local dollars into housing. Our clients already need transitional housing and support services. We only want to fund permanent housing, and our people need the extra support. So you're going to see a big push on the Mental Health Board Recovery Board the next year or two, working with Larry and Compass and those agencies that, I mean, it's a basic need. People deserve decent housing, and that's, that's what we need to do.
We could spend two days on this. Really.
Larry, at some point, we could discuss what you mentioned earlier to Carol and I about this federal rule that's inhibiting your ability to, to expand your program. So I, I would appreciate learning more about that.
Thank you.
Oh, I was going to ask Larry, like, how are you going to use the two million? Because I don't think you really.
No. She, she got four fifty.
You'll take two million, yeah.
You know, we have, that's continues to be the support for our facility on, on Chalmers in Cleveland on the south side of Youngstown. Um, and it is, again, this is a facility that was the old assumption nursing home that we continued to renovate, uh, but still trying to work to make it, you know, a safer place for people and, and even working on, uh, supporting that neighborhood. Um, so it's going to be used to update a lot of our safety features over there, a lot of our furniture and, um, the, the air system over there to make sure that it's safer.
Okay. I seen that. I think that's great because you have everybody in one place, more fresh air, less germs.
Well, and I think the next thing on, on our agenda for that facility would be to renovate, um, a lot of the restrooms. And I think the day of sort of, I don't know if you would call those, the multi-stall kind of restrooms for men and women uh, are gone, and I think that we need to start making individualized restrooms and services for people so that everybody, regardless of their orientation, can feel safe coming into a facility like ours.
And you have both women and men separate?
Yes.
At the Chalmers? Oh, yeah.
We do.
Okay. And I want to say.
Anyone else, yeah.
Well, I just want to say that both, um, Meridian and Valley Partners have worked with the Commissioners through the CARES Act funding. They've proven themselves to be good stewards of the funds that have come through them um, and ministering the needs of the community. So I think the Commissioners have done a good job in selecting them as one of the recipients of the funds. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Letter B.
No, the rest hopefully won't be that long. Item B, uh, resolution to nominate, uh, Mr. Dwayne Picarelli, um, to become the Region Seven Representative on the Ohio One Foundation Board. Item C is, um, resolution approving the continuation of outside council of, um, Mesnick resident and writer L E P, L E P A in the additional amount of twenty-five thousand. Item D, uh, a resolution establishing reappointment in a center program for unclassified judiciary via Commissioners employees. And item E is a resolution establishing special revenue fund for certain to Ohio Vice Code fifty-seven oh five point thirteen. I went past through those, but I also wanted to give Dwayne an opportunity if he wanted to say something with the appointment.
Duane?
Just, I appreciate your confidence, and I realize this is a nomination and, and, uh, it'll go to like the next level, but, you know, I'm, I, I understand with the agencies, I understand the needs. I've worked in both Mahoney and Trumbull County. So, uh, which I guess the next step, see what happens. So I think it's an opportunity.
And Duane, this would, this is the opiate. And you would be on that board for us, so they know what.
We are listed in Region Seven, which is, um, Mahoney County and Trumbull County. And on a quick, short notice, we had, uh, the Commissioners had to come up with a recommendation for someone to be on that board, and it would then be go up to the next level for selection.
Easy recommendation.
Yep.
Okay. All right then. Thank you, Audrey. Are we, we've covered that, correct?
Yeah.
All right. E M A? Anna, okay.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to amend Resolution twenty-one oh eight eighteen for the Emergency Management Performance Grant to correct the project period to October one, twenty twenty to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Thank you, Anna. Letter G, Hazmat. Joe, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Resolution G would be for cost recovery for a hydrochloric acid spill in North Jackson and a refrigerant, uh, leak in Boardman Township.
Okay, thank you. Letter H, Job and Family, Audrey Morales?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Job and Family Service. This is a resolution approving the appointment of one M I S computer specialist. Thank you.
Thank you. O M B Grants?
Commissioners, this resolution is approving the application from Compass Family and Community Services to receive fronts from the marriage license fees and divorce and dissolution fees in the estimated amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. And risk management, Kathy? Morning.
You're muted, Kathy.
That's not a bad thing.
I can hear you now. This is a resolution to approve a part-time clerical to go to a full-time clerical, and I appreciate the support from the Commissioners. Uh, we have a lot going on, lots of projects. Uh, and I want to also, uh, thank Pat Genetti and some of the other elected officials for the partnership. We're doing a lot of compliance, proactive risk management. So, uh, we're working hard on risk management for everybody, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Kathy. Sheriff, Mr. Abiers?
Morning, everyone. Commissioners, this is a resolution to renew a contract with the City of Campfield Police Department to implement a fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, uh, O V I Task Force grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. And L is a resolution in support of an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for following grants. The high debt grant of thirty-five thousand, eight fifty-four, ninety-five, and the step grant of forty-four thousand, seven ninety-four, ninety-five with no local matches.
Thank you, Joe. Motion?
A motion approved number two, resolutions A through L.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Dixler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Taffey Canty?
Yes. And, uh, before we get to the good of the order, I see Ryan Teacack, our Health Commissioner, is with us. Ryan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Appreciate it. So once again, thanks for the time to, to have the floor here. Just a few updates here from, uh, our county health department. On the national level, uh, you probably have heard that they're starting to see a decline in cases with, uh, considered, uh, with the Delta variant. Um, it's hard to project what we're going to see here in the month of October, at least locally. Uh, I can say for in the month of September, uh, we were averaging anywhere from about a hundred and twenty-five cases down to maybe a hundred cases. So it kind of was a roller coaster up and down. Uh, we did see some days where we dipped down into the eighties, uh, and we're hoping that, uh, with the information that we're hearing, at least at the federal level, national level, that we'll start to see a decrease in cases. In terms of vaccinations, um, we've transitioned for our booster shots back to the Austintown Senior Center uh, every Friday, and this is for the Pfizer boosters who, which the Pfizer booster shots are made available uh, to anyone who has completed their complete vaccination process with the Pfizer vaccine. Uh, they are six months out. Anyone that's sixty-five years or older, uh, based off the CDC guidance and supported by the Ohio Department of Health, uh, sixty-five years or older, uh, should receive a booster. Fifty to sixty-four, uh, who have underlying medical conditions should also receive a booster. And then people with the ages anywhere from eighteen to forty-nine, uh, with any type of underlying medical conditions as defined by the CDC uh, should also receive that booster. Uh, it is also extended out to individuals who may be at a high-risk job, so anyone that's eighteen and older uh, that is in a high-risk, uh, career that puts them, uh, at risk to contract COVID, such as working in the hospital setting. Teachers, uh, may also receive a booster shot. The one thing that is different going into this year is there are a number of providers, uh, here in Mahoney County uh, that are able to fulfill the boosters. Uh, so it's not just your health departments and your large hospital systems. It's also your pharmacies, uh, potentially doctors' offices as well. Um, since we've opened up, uh, by appointment only at the Austintown Senior Center on Fridays, which were scheduled to start tomorrow, uh, we have about two hundred and fifty-seven spots still open, a hundred and seventy-five that are scheduled to receive their booster shots. Uh, once again, it's by appointment only, and that's to ensure that we can, uh, cross-check or cross-reference uh, that these individuals, uh, are eligible to receive the Pfizer vaccine, and they didn't receive something else such as Moderna prior to. One of the other things that I don't want to forget about, and that we don't want to forget about, is we're getting into flu season. Uh, that's something that we, uh, truly probably didn't discuss over the last past two years, but one thing that we don't want to see is co-infection of COVID and influenza. Uh, once again, there is a vaccine for influenza, uh, that has, uh, been used, uh, over the years. Um, and we have a number of flu clinics, uh, that are scheduled, uh, throughout the county. Uh, we are currently hosting one here at our office today, uh, from nine A.M. to six P.M. Uh, appointments are not necessary. Uh, any individual can, uh, walk into our main office here at fifty West Chester Drive and receive the flu vaccine. Uh, we'll have another clinic running tomorrow, so October eighth, from one to four P.M. And that's at Canfield United Methodist Church. And then if you go to our website, uh, we do list out the number of clinics throughout the month of October uh, that are occurring throughout the county, as well as at our office with extended late hours to six P.M. Uh, but once again, like I said, we'll continue to offer our booster shots for the Pfizer vaccine at the Austintown Senior Center. So I would like to thank the Austintown Township Trustees, uh, the staff at the Senior Center, as well as our seniors here in Mahoney County that use the facility to allow us to, uh, kind of disrupt, uh, at least one of their days because we're going to fully take over the Senior Center every Friday. So, once again, I just want to thank those individuals for allowing us to do that. Uh, other than that, I will go ahead and open up if there's any questions.
Um, I do. Uh, Ryan, when do you think that the Moderna will have the booster?
So what we're hearing from our partners at the state level is, uh, the FDA is supposed to meet this month, uh, later in the month to, to have those discussions of whether or not, uh, or when the Moderna vaccine will be made available for boosters. Um, from what I am hearing, that, uh, meeting is supposed to take place the third week of October. Um, but that, that could change. It could get moved up potentially. So we are, we will continue to offer the Pfizer, uh, the Pfizer booster. Um, but as you know, the majority of the vaccines that we offered in the beginning, um, was Moderna. We're maybe had one or two weeks where we were offering Pfizer. Um, so we're prepared to, once we receive approval, to continue to use the Senior Center every Friday and to be able to offer, um, boosters for both Pfizer and Moderna.
Ryan, you, uh, mentioned different categories that it was open to. Uh, is that restricted only to those categories? Someone sixty years old that, you know, wants to get a booster who got a shot a year ago, can't come get a booster? If they don't fall into an underlying condition category or help, you know, or the job requirements?
Yeah, so currently right now, the CDC, the way it's stated, um, the, for example, I think you use the age of sixty. So if they're fifty to sixty-four with an underlying medical condition, they should receive it. The individual.
You say should, but if I don't have an underlying condition, can I receive it?
You would, you would have to attest to one of these conditions, so an individual would have to come. So an individual would have to come to our clinic, and there's a series of questions that we would ask them. And you would have to attest that whether or not you meet the criteria. If you don't meet the criteria at that point, we wouldn't be able to provide the booster.
Seems unusual. But with so many people that don't get the shot, so many, so many openings for, you know, opportunities to get the shot, that there'd be any restrictions at all if people wanted to get it? I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Are you required to follow those, those rules and regulations? Or can you give the shot out based on somebody coming in and asking?
So as a vaccine provider with the state, so anyone that is, I don't want to say registered, but actually certified as a vaccine provider with the state, we're required to follow those rules. So it's a attestation process that the individual has to attest to one of those conditions. We're not asking for proof, but it's that individual has to attest to whether or not they meet one of those criteria set forth by the CDC.
Ryan, are you hearing any negative effects of the booster shot so far from?
No, I've followed a couple recent kind of studies. Individuals are having the same mild symptoms that when you receive your booster, such as soreness at the injection site, headache. So those same conditions that people may have experienced when they received their first or second dose of the Pfizer vaccine. The one thing I guess I forgot to touch on too, so I know we're talking about boosters, first and second doses. We also don't want to forget about individuals can call our health department, and we will schedule them in during the week during any of our adult immunization or adolescent immunization clinics. So we, we don't want to forget about the first and second doses that individuals still need to receive, and we continue to encourage individuals to receive it. There are studies out there that indicate, because there's a lot of questions of whether or not the Delta variant has escaped the vaccine, the effectiveness, because we, we hear about vaccine breakthrough cases, and we're wondering if it's because of the Delta variant or if it's because that the vaccine is waning, which is declining. And I was talking to Dr. Kravik, our medical director here, and there was a study that was published in the Lancet Medical Journal. And the vaccine is very effective currently based off of the study with the Delta variant. The waning is due to the, exactly what it is, decline in the effectiveness of the vaccine over time. And that's why we're seeing the recommendation for booster shots to be received six months after your second dose.
Right. What's, what is the percentage of those that have not received any vaccination at all? I mean, compared to what we should be seeing in numbers and percentages right now?
Well, when you look at the Ohio Department of Health website, because on that website, they have a map that you basically hover over the county, which it also includes data for Youngstown. We are at about, I think the last time I looked, I want to say fifty-two percent of individuals who have at least received one dose of the vaccination, whether it's Pfizer, Moderna, or the complete dose of Johnson and Johnson, which is one shot. So we're at about fifty-two percent here in Mahoning County.
What about the city? Is Aaron on?
Is Aaron Bishop up there?
No.
So now that the last time I, her and I talked, I want to say her number was, I want to say hovering around forty-eight percent, just for the city.
Anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Teacack? Oh, Ryan, we thank you again for your time and knowledge.
He's doing great. He's getting big.
Is he wearing his orange and brown on a weekly basis?
At this point, the way the Steelers are playing, he might be.
Oh, my God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really appreciate your time.
And for the good of the order, any elected officials or department heads? No? Okay. Sorry to make you wait so long, Ralph.
We're waiting for.
We have Perry Alexandrides. Did I say that correctly, sir?
Alexandridus.
Alexandridus. I like that. From here, from, he's a regional liaison for State Auditor's Office, Mr. Faber, and he is here to give a proclamation on behalf of our county auditor, Mr. Meacham, so please come up, Perry, however you'd like to do this.
Good spot.
Good spot.
If you see us, if you want to get closer, we can.
Seen him enough last night.
I was winning my trophy, by the way. I heard you got robbed. Best overall. Fix was in. Perry Alexandridus with State Auditor Keith Faber's office. I'm also a Mahoning County resident, as I mentioned earlier. Proud Mahoning County resident.
Home of Ohio.
So it's my pleasure today to present the State Auditor, Ohio Auditor Award with Distinction to Mahoning County. A little bit about the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction. So there's about six thousand governmental entities across the state of Ohio. Approximately eight percent of those qualify for the Auditor of State Award, and approximately four percent qual- qualified for the Auditor of State Award with distinction. So pretty exclusive group. A lot of things go into that consideration, as Auditor Meacham understands a lot better than I do, but a very exclusive club to be in. Basically, you know, no timeliness issues, no issues with public records, anything like that. You know, it's, it's, it's really quite an accomplishment, not just an accomplishment with the Auditor's Office, but this takes every single county employee, every single employee in Mahoning County, putting in the time, putting in the effort, making sure all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. So I want to say congratulations on behalf of State Auditor Keith Faber and the people of State of Ohio. Congratulations. Thank you for the job that you all do. Thank you for being a watchdog of over taxpayers' dollars and taking that seriously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Faber, Perry, for all your support. I didn't really know much about this till we got our first one a couple of years ago, and I was truly impressed and honored that we'd be within this esteemed ranks. It's very validating to realize what you're striving to do is being recognized and appreciated. I have a great staff. I think I have the best staff that I've ever had in the Auditor's Office. We work closely with the other offices, and we're doing the right things, and it's really good to be recognized for that. Thank you for your. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Perry.
Dave, little Jacob's making brown and orange now. I'm sure he is. Yeah, no, I, I just would like to thank, you know, Teresa Miller and Valley Partners and their great work and that they're doing to help get the monies into the hands of the people that need it to help their businesses survive. One of the first and foremost things that our board and our, and our departments have done collectively is to make sure that people and small businesses are assisted, you know, whether it be through food needs or different opportunities to go with the United Way or, or to Second Harvest with Valley Partners and entities such as Larry Malaterno, who snuck out, and, and Meridian Services to help people that have a need. And, and I know that the businesses are very important to us to make sure that we try to assist them to remain stable and viable and, and work through the, the difficulties that they continue to have because of COVID. And Larry, with the vulnerable people that he has, that, that don't have the opportunities to provide for themselves and either some disability, that their entities have always been, you know, a leader in trying to assist in the valley and in Mahoning County especially. So I really want to thank you guys for the great job. And there's, there's a lot of other entities as well that do a great job, and a lot of the monies is just starting to come out and different things being allocated. So we have a ways to go, so there's a lot of things in the works that, you know, we continue to sort through to see, you know, who will, you know, best fit the needs of the criteria established by the government, by the federal government for us to move forward as we do these things. And Anna and Audrey and everybody, thank you so much for, you know, all your hard work to do this and to accomplish it. Congratulations on all the chili people here. Favorite celebrity. So Anthony, Anthony's always the big winner. I thought, I thought it was Anthony was winning because he ate the most chili. I didn't know he had the best chili. I thought I could beat him eating the most chili.
It was a posse eating contest, look.
There you go. Now, I, 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 what, what kind of chili Janetti have? That's what I want to know. Did he have like white chicken chili or something different?
No, it was darker.
It was regular chili.
It was regular chili?
It was good. Oh, yeah.
And did Mary Alice make your chili, Ralph?
I was the executive chef. She was the.
She was the worker. She was the worker bee. It's always a good time, you know, always a good event, you know, I, I always enjoy that. I try, always trying to make mine the hottest.
Yours was, Dave. You have to do it next year.
I will.
Yeah.
Good. Partners next year.
Yeah, there you go. Me and you'll go partners to try to knock Anthony off the top.
Yeah, that's what we're.
You'll save me some money.
We're going to have you vote on our children.
That's fine. Whatever we got.
All three of us will go together. That way we could say we all won.
The trustees did that important.
They always do. They're always together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just echo what Dave, what Dave said, Teresa and Meridian. I think that's great what we're doing. We create jobs that are lasting. I think our businesses need it. I think the Commissioners are looking at every avenue, like Dave said, and Anthony about. How did you say this? In a, in a terrible time of COVID, we had to come up to this level to maybe help our businesses move forward even after COVID and maybe sustain, which I think most of them will. I really do. When you're creating one and two jobs per, per business, I think that would, is sustainable. So I'm happy about that and all the other services that we have given with the food giveaways and, and mental health in all respects is the most underserved and hidden. And now we've brought it to the surface where this pandemic has really moved this to another level. So I want to thank Dwayne and Anna, and of course Audrey and all the team that we have that have put forth the effort to do this. It's very important. And like Dave said, we're just starting, you know, we have to look at the criteria. We're just starting our move into that direction where we're going to help a lot of people all over Mahoning County, our townships and our villages and our cities. Everybody is, has been sending us things, and we're trying to assist all of them and trying to get them through this pandemic but have a lasting effect on what this money could be used for, that help them move out of the bind that they're in, but move them forward to help them move forward and get more, more into their townships and villages. When it comes to the Chili Cook-Off, I do want to congratulate everybody. It is a great event. And Jan Cephalo does a great job now with that. She starts beating us up early on to get it done.
Like August.
Yeah, really. But you know what? Like Anthony and Dave said, it's a good cause because they give money, scholarships, they help the kids. So it doesn't matter. We're all winners when we're there. Even if we don't win, we win. I went home with no chili. And I, I gotta say, I did not make it this year. I had Chris Benanshi made my chili, and he did a phenomenal job. He also had his homemade hot peppers there.
Which I took.
And homemade buns, so.
I took them all home.
Yes, he did. He come over and Bernie unloaded every one of them on him. I said, what are you doing? He says, well, you know. But which the good part is, for the amount that I did bring, which was the four or five gallon he gave me, I had nothing left. And I think that's good because then I didn't need a cleanup. So I was happy, and he did a great job. So I'm not going to take credit for that, but he did.
I always made that hot pepper beer chili. You know, the, now you put a, a base in it, you know, it was tomato paste and Killian's dark lager beer. And he put an entire six-pack of Killian's beer in my chili. And then I used to take a quart of my hot peppers, which when I, when I make my hot peppers, they're jalapeno, ties, cayenne, habanero, and those ones are fifty percent of the jar, and the other fifty percent is just the Hungarian hots. And I'm, and I make them with the, the ketchup and apple cider vinegar and the, and the sweet sauce. So I would take an entire quart, and I would puree it and put it into my chili, you know, and, and it always, I, I, I thought it was a good taste, and I just like got different recipes offline and mixed them all together, you know. But the one that was, you know, when you ate the chili, you'd say, boy, it's kind of familiar taste there to a B. Can't tell, and then, then when I tell them the beer, you know, then I, oh, yeah, you know, so.
So two bowls of your chili and you're riding high.
Right, half a six-pack.
Not really. A six-pack and five gallons of chili isn't too much, but it'll, but it'll give you, you know, you'll recognize the taste of it. Always liked the hot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anthony always gets good chilies.
Yeah, my, my recipe, it's, mine's vegetarian chili. It's lentil beans and all kinds of spices. But I, I agree with Carol and Dave, you know, this is a charity event. And I just want some people to remember whoever wins and whoever puts more money in. It shouldn't bother people because it goes to the kids. At the end of the day, the optimist donates that to needy families and needy kids. So, you know, there is a little bit of competition, and I got a little bit of needles last night, a little bit.
We have fun with that, joking around with everybody.
No, not you guys, but some of the other ones here, but i- it's for the kids. So, you know, I'm happy that we did what we did, and Jerry, congratulations to everybody who, who won that. But on, on another note, I, I just want to say that this is something that the Commissioners spoke about for some time, and we have one opportunity with this federal money, and we were able to establish our own revolving loan fund with the administration by Valley Partners. I always said for years that the local community best understands the needs, and as long as we have those funds, we can give those funds out to help businesses, to help startups, to help people maintain, create jobs. And we're very happy to have you, Teresa, in your organization to do that. Larry Malaterno, I know he left. We have a lot of people, unfortunately, in this community that have mental illness and addiction. We're very proud to be able to help assist his agency and other local agencies with Dwayne at the helm overseeing a lot of this. Anna, you've done a magnificent job helping us organize, following the guidelines with the money, you and Audrey. So we're very fortunate, and like Dave said, we're going to continue to do this throughout, throughout the community, throughout the years. Ralph, congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
Well deserved, well deserved. Perry, thank you for coming, and say hello to Mr. Faber from us.
You'll be here next week for us, right?
Put a ball back.
Yeah, sure.
And Nancy, our next meeting?
Next Tuesday, right here.
Same time and all that. Okay. Well, come on back. All right, motion.
Second.
Second by Dave. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vermiddio Aggetti? Commissioner Chuff again.
Thank you.